For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Pipia. Frye.
Present.
Schroller.
Here.
Hughes.
Present.
Baikman.
Present.
Price.
Here.
Behrens.
Here.
Throm.
Here.
Seven oh, we have a quorum.
Okay, first up, we have the minutes for the last meeting. Does anyone have any additions or changes?
To approve of their meeting on June 8th.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right.
Move to approve a special meeting.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Okay. Uh, next, we have public comment period. Anybody that wants to come up for five minutes? Are they here for, I suppose?
I would say, like I said, they're all in your jingles.
Hello?
I'm Noah Ackerman.
And I'm Garrett Shampoo.
And we are here tonight representing the senior class at MHS. Prom has been rescheduled for Marysville High School juniors and seniors on July 11th to make up for one that was canceled in April. We would like to do the traditional senior march down Main Street, so we are asking for permission for the Highway 36 to be temporarily blocked off. And also permission to use non-street legal motorized vehicles to parade such as our golf carts side by side rangers. We would like, we would, we plan to abide by the laws and regulations, and we know the law enforcement will be present and will write tickets if necessary. We would like your busing to continue this tradition in this very non-traditional.
You mean Highway 77, not 36, right? 10th Street?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds like, well, that's new.
They're going a different direction.
Who should approve the request?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. Hello?
Hi, I'm Dana Ackerman.
And I'm Julie Shampoo.
And, um, we're here to talk about something super similar. Last year with prom, we introduced a promenade that went down the 7th Street corridor to the Pony Express statue. And, uh, we would like to propose that again this year, but we would need permission to stop traffic just for that short amount of time while we did that.
Stop traffic going.
Seventh on Broadway.
Just from.
The 7th Street corridor.
Not on Elm or Walnut. Where do you come from?
They'll, they'll march down from the Hellbringer Center down the 7th Street corridor.
Okay, just from Hellbringer Center.
Mm-hmm, and then to the Pony Express statue. So it would just be across the street rather. And that we're planning to do about 7:15-ish.
On the 11th?
On the 11th?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Move to approve the request for the promenade.
In street closure?
Uh, in street closure, yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else for a five-minute public comment? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, general business. Uh, first up, we have fireworks discharge request from Andrew Kane. Is he here?
No, he just sent in the request and we wanted to make sure that he saw it, so to put it out in the consent. Just normal.
So he got all his signatures.
His neighbors did sign. He missed one that we thought might want to know, so we called her and she had no problem with it. She just wasn't home when he went, got signatures.
I'm going to approve the fireworks discharge request by, from Andrew Kane.
Second.
Any further discussion?
And this includes, just to put it out there, a street closing on Oak Street between 14th and 15th Street. Just to put it out there so everybody knows.
On the 4th.
On the 4th.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Uh, next up, we have economic development at 311 South 7th Street. And I don't think he's here. But yeah, looking at the pictures, it's probably not as good on the inside. It doesn't look that bad on the outside, but the inside, yeah.
I wrote a recommendation.
Yes, on the. Got a motion to.
Move to approve the request for the economic development at 311 South 7th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Get there.
Was just, we're just gonna demolish it, or demolish it, or is there plans to do something with it?
It sounded like he plans on building something later, but it might be a couple of years.
He said it'd probably be about three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's gonna let the ground settle first.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question, because I walked around it today and it looks like it could still run it.
Yeah, I mean, on the outside, it doesn't look that bad. The inside pictures, yeah.
The floor is fine.
But, um.
Okay.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have Kenny Kinkhafer with, uh, paying off the pool bonds. Hello?
Hey, there, I'm Kenny Kinkhafer. These are past due treasures, and, uh, this isn't fully my idea, but, uh, as we came about, we had discussions on the possibility of taking the excess funds we had to pay the pool bond off. Currently, uh, there is available between the PBC and the pool sales tax fund, $2,679,000 available. That's after the end of last month. We want to leave some cash balance in the pool funds, which is an insurance creation, but currently I've left about $57,000 in my projection, because we'll have another $40-some thousand coming in this month, quickly about $100,000, and that's about what the pool has been operating a loss on, that was last, for the last several years. We do collect $45,000 to $49,000 from us on the pool bonds. Uh, we need about $100,000 from that. Obviously, that's generating closer to $50,000-some thousand a year. The bonds we currently have are callable in September, and their current average is close to 2.87%. The interest we're earning on our CD, which is currently at $3,978,000, is 0.5%, and we're really getting like 0.15% on our checking account. Obviously, there's substantial interest there, if you see. I think you've got spreadsheets in front of you. First one now shows that you give the CD with $3,978,000 as the excess fund we have on the bond now. I think they're still close to $10 million, $3 million, $4 million in checking accounts.
Forty-five.
We need about $100,000 of that from Firehouse that's been presented, so that leaves us with $3,388,000. The PBC has $595,000. So we have $3,983,000 of excess funds as of the end of last month. The total principal of the bonds, if we pay them off in September, is $3,345,000, and we have $37,682 in interest. And they estimated that the cost to, uh, of attorney's fees to give notice and pay off existing bonds would be $4,5000.
How much?
Four to five thousand.
Four to five?
Five thousand. I don't know exactly, but in that range. So in doing so, uh, using the pool funds, uh, we could pay off $2,575,000 plus the interest and still leave us with $57,000 in the pool funds we're operating the pool, plus incoming, uh, monthly sales tax. That would then require $770,000 out of our CD from our other funds to be loaned to the PBC, uh, for them, uh, to pay those bonds off entirely. The PBC, they would pay interest and principal back to the city at whatever schedule you guys determine. On the second page, I have a couple of options there. You'll see that the total, first column actually is what they borrowed the bond from. The total, we would spend, uh, $3,904,465 to pay off the principal and interest over the remaining 12 years. The second column, I took that $770,000 and did a loan to the PBC, uh, at 0.5% interest, the same as we're getting on the CD, which we would invest with them. And if they paid us back at the same rate that we're currently obligated to pay on the bonds, it would take, uh, about three years, just short of three years, to pay that note back to the city. The sales tax bond actually has the flexibility of paying $210,000 every six months, and that's what the third set of columns is. In either case, we're saving $737,000 to $739,000 of interest, uh, that we wouldn't have to pay on those bonds, and that'd be money in our pocket down the road. Do you have any questions on that? I know that they've called all the appropriate people, and they said there's no problem with doing this from a legality standpoint. We would invest the $770,000 of other funds and use the sales tax money, pay as the lease, to the PBC, and then they would make the appropriate payments in September. Cindy, did they say specifically when they need notified that they're paying them off, so they'd be paid for it?
At least 20 days. They need it sooner rather than later, because they have to write a letter to every single person that owns a bond.
So 20 days before September 1st.
At least, but.
Just to see if they need to be made so far.
Yeah, at least, they, the sooner the better. They, they wanted to know if we weren't going to refund them. That's the part, in other words, we weren't going to refinance. That's especially important, that they know that part.
And refinancing would cost you a lot more and not really save you the interest, or save you this example.
Just to make everybody comfortable, the screen, if we were ever going to use this money for anything else, they wanted to keep it in the pool reserve. Where are we going to borrow this money from ourselves? What funds are we going to take this out of?
It's just coming out of the other funds. Currently, we have $3,788,000 in a CD, invested in a CD. Uh, the pool, $2,840,000, and that's the pool.
Right.
That money would go to pay the bonds off, and they wouldn't be expected to pay that back to the city. And there's $595,000 in the, uh, in the PBC already. The rest of it, the $770,000 would come back into the city, just like it does when the CD is paid off. It's not any one fund's money. It's just, all of our money is in a CD or in a checking account that makes up all the funds. The funds account for the money, just like they always have. The pool money is still going into the pool fund, uh, except for what we use to pay the bonds off, which would have been used down the road anyway. So the pool fund is actually the one that's benefiting from all this interest savings.
Without a doubt.
Everyone's not going to pay the $750,000 of interest down the road. So all that money would accumulate in the pool sales tax fund at the city level, and theoretically, there's going to be close to $5 million there, when the sales tax expires.
Well, I'm for anything that'll save the city money and get this taken care of, but I was just curious if, if we had to do some borrowing or make juggling figures, there'd be a chance that we could just recall, like, say, the, the big interest for seven years? And in three years, we could pay the rest off and leave, uh, leave, leave, just let it run itself out. And I was just wondering if that might be smarter than borrowing or doing something else with the money, and, um, I wondered if.
Okay, uh, I did take a look at that. If we only use the pool money that's available now, then it's any of the city's money. We could pay all of it in the next four years, the first four years of payments. And with the revenue that the pool sales tax generates, that four years of bonds could be called and paid off in the next two years.
I would think so, too. The one thing I kind of worry about is if we're taking some money that maybe we're gonna, gonna need for this, we've got a big water project next year, and the lagoon deal is going to be coming up. I just wondered if we're cutting ourselves short, if we didn't hang on to a few of those bonds, just to have some laughing chips to take care of other things. I, I just wanted to ask that.
Uh, since I've been city treasurer, the, the city's accounts have not fallen below $5 million, five or six million dollars. So there's always, there's usually cash there. So if the fund is available that has resources in it, all the funds are co-convenable in here. So if you've got a fund that's got enough money to pay for those, the cash will be to, to cover that.
That's a big hallelujah, yeah. I can see that.
So what are you, you're looking at, what, $318,000 on that waterline project?
On the.
Jenkins Laramie?
Jenkins. I mean, that's what we have put down for it, yes. But, uh, this, like you said, this idea would not affect the funds themselves, um, because it's, it's our, the funds are our own accounting system.
Right.
If there's money in the bank, we can spend it as long as we've budgeted for it.
Plus, I mean, we're not going to draw enough out of the reserves to affect other projects we have around on.
And the, and the idea, um, would be to pay back the most vulnerable spots, if, if that is, if you want to think about it that way. But it, it's not really that, uh, for, because we have $3.8 million in, in investment. It's basically the same thing. Except, we're not gonna, we don't have the, we won't have the direct ability to just, okay, I need that money back. It'll be just an investment, um, uh, unlike right now, where we have the ability to, to bring back our CDs, uh, without penalty, um, because of COVID. Normally, we wouldn't, but it, that'd be our normal investment. So doing it this way would be like we were just investing in PBC rather than a, a CD at the bank.
Okay.
So.
Like you said, I just didn't want to run it short on our waterline project.
Yeah.
Well, not to mention the lagoon.
Yep. And the other, and the way I understood it, too, is that every, say, if we, if we paid off some of the bonds, and then next year, we decide we're going to pay some more, call some more bonds, there are fees every time that we do that. Legal fees and three, four, $5,000 every time. So if we pay off, we're going to be paying another $15,000.
Every time we call.
Legal fees and interest in the next three years.
The excess of that besides the, the CD. There's close to $8 million right now, but we're going to take $2 million of it out of there because of the pool money. Money's going to go to pay the bonds off, and we're going to expect that back.
Right.
I think this is a viable way to do things, especially if we're going to save the city $740,000 in the long run.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it, the bank account's going to look a little short for the time being, but like you said, we get, uh, we're going to get at least $40,000 every month to, to rebuild that back up. We average 45 to 49, but 40 is, is, is that.
$49,000, average last year from sales tax and pools. And like I said, $2,679,000 of this is actually pool money.
Yeah, it's already set in that fund.
It's going to go to pay those bonds off. We're operating, uh, we're only using $770,000. The other funds, investments, and there's $3.5 million something in the bank.
Is this still going to look that good to all these people that do a lot of calling about it, when something gets used that isn't being saved for the pool?
Well, this.
I feel the way you do, but.
Everything that's been saved for the pool is going to go to pay the pool bonds off, okay? We then have $770,000 that the pool, uh, will pay us back. We're just kind of investing it with the pool funds to pay those bonds off, and they will pay us back with 0.5% interest. So the pool's gaining 2.37% interest, because that's what they were paying on the bonds. So the pool's going to come out actually more ahead than they would have. They're the largest saving project. They'll have more money in the end than they would if we paid the bonds off this year.
Then one other question I wanted to ask, because we jumped ahead of ourselves and we passed a resolution to issue more bonds. What, what, what do we do about that part of it?
For refinancing?
Yes. How do we get rid of this resolution where we said we were going to reissue bonds?
All we did was allow him to check into it. We didn't actually tell him to do it.
If, if we weren't going to save the $300,000.
Yeah, he said we could back up, but his, the issue is, we do need to tell him right away, if we're not doing it.
Yeah.
So that is the big.
And, and didn't we need to issue one of those resolutions anyways, if we're.
The one to, the one to recall.
Yeah.
We did. It was the second one to refinance, that they're already working on that, so we need to tell them if we're not going to.
Yeah.
Right away, so that they don't publish that, that we're looking to sell bonds.
Yeah. So we, we did one, one step in the right direction to get, to get this done. And if he would have followed through the, completely, and at the end, we decided not to do it, we had that option, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Questions?
You answered mine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Now, if you need a motion authorized.
I would say if they want to change the resolution, why not new resolution not to refinance?
Well, I think we should probably, um, make a resolution to set up this agreement.
Okay.
So authorization. To set up this agreement between the PBC and the city to, to do this. Um, so it's out, it's, it's in writing.
In writing.
Yes. So authorization to bring up a resolution to do this would be great.
Okay. Move to authorize Austin, whoever needs, uh, Don, and probably Kenny to work on a resolution for bringing the payoff to the pool.
Got a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Okay. All right. Uh, next up, we have inline construction with Hartley Ridge street surface. Hello?
Hello, council. Uh, my name is Deborah Lumber. I'm here tonight to represent inline construction, uh, about the Hartley Streets of Hartley Ridge subdivision. Apologize, the guys aren't here tonight. They're on the job. Um, tonight, I'm here to ask, um, for your consideration to allow an alternate surface to your acceptable streets in the city. I don't quite know how to word that, other than gravel, asphalt, or concrete. When we first, um, did the development for Hartley Ridge, our intention was to do concrete streets. Um, right now, that's, um, an expensive proposition, so we're looking for an alternative. We went to the Planning Commission, first March, maybe, somewhere around there, um, and then the COVID-19 happened, so we had intentions of following up right away with you guys. Um, I visited with Jake at Hall Brothers, and what we're proposing is a cold mix, cold lay, um, with a surface seal, which is like chip and seal, rather than, uh, concrete. But again, it's got to be an approved surface by, uh, city council. Jake, in talking with Jake, um, he said that they would get used millings that had a, an optimum oil content, and this product, once it's laid, would need maintenance. Um, that would be the chip and seal maintenance that you're already, that you already, the city already does. I don't know if it's worth considering. I don't know if this, if, uh, you know, materials improve, there's new technology, innovation plays into it. Hall Brothers is a reputable company. That's who we would be working with on this, and it would provide a solid surface for the subdivision. Keep in mind that, um, surrounding the subdivision is North 8th Street, which is gravel, and is usually not in good shape, and the same could be said of Jayhawk Road. So, um, I'm asking, we're asking for you to consider another surface that would be acceptable by the city.
Is there any goal of coming back later and removing this?
For inline?
Yeah.
To do concrete?
Yeah, to go back to the concrete down the line?
I would say no.
Okay.
To be honest.
Wonder if we just turned it over to Hartley Ridge, and you guys just maintain the streets, and the city just signed off on it.
And just love the gravel?
You can do whatever you want to, then. We just had a contract with you, and you guys just do whatever you want to with your streets, and we don't have to worry about the streets out there.
My fear is us inheriting problems down the road. You know, I, I feel like there's been plenty of councils that came before everyone here that agreed to things, and now we're fixing them, so that's always the fear.
Well, if, if they had a contract, if we signed a contract, we didn't.
So you're talking about the city never taking over the street?
You mean like Keating, Keating Drive? Keating Drive's private?
Yep.
Yeah.
They'd be responsible for snow removal, everything. It's on them.
Maybe, and everybody who purchased lots or built homes would understand that and not come to the city.
That would be in there.
That would be part of their.
They wouldn't come knocking on our door. Have to.
Well, that's, then they can do whatever they want to with it.
I did, that surprises me. I did not expect that comeback.
Well, I mean, then we don't, then we don't go through this.
I didn't realize that any, any streets or anything operated that way.
Yeah. The, um, hold on, well, if we wrote up an agreement, possibly.
If we, because a plat was finally platted with concrete. I don't know if we can unplat. I mean, I don't know how you do it.
What?
John?
Well, the Planning Commission ruled that plat, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It was seen to me, the logical process, send it back to Planning Commission for review and any amendments to that.
Right, that's where we were initially, and then, uh, the discussion that kind of took place was, well, you probably need to go to council and see if they'll sign off on it, and then come back to the Planning Commission. So we were going back to the Planning Commission regardless.
Because we, this body would be the end, I think, approving the easements and stuff like that.
Easements and dedications, and they were approved by the city council. The easements and dedications were.
Right. This, this body could say there's a consensus to have this Planning Commission review it, and then they could review it and have a public hearing and decide what would be the best for the city and perhaps the development itself.
Could remove it, the street from the city's dedication.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that was an option.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
It's a suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we said, there's one private drive in, in City Marysville.
And they did that because it was a financial thing for them. That's how it was plotted from the beginning.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I can, uh, if that's agreeable to you, uh.
That includes police protection.
Correct. There would be no police protection on that road.
Unless there's an agreement.
Right.
What do you mean?
No patrol.
No, we couldn't patrol. No, no, we can't patrol.
Hold on. There, there is a way we can do that.
Make an agreement.
Make an agreement that you allow, basically, you write into this whole thing that, uh, the police are allowed to enforce the laws.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be no issue.
Because right now, you have nobody that has lots out there that doesn't know this. I mean.
Correct.
Uh, that have bought lots, that think that they're going to have concrete streets, right?
That's correct.
So, I mean, you would, you would sell the rest of the lots, knowing that.
Knowing that it's either going to be gravel or some other alternate surface and, yeah.
Right.
I, I don't think that you guys, I mean, I, I can relay the message. Um, I can't commit to that, but if you're willing to just turn the street over, or the, what would you call it then, not a.
It's a private, private street.
It's a private street.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, we've got to go back to the Planning Commission anyway, so, um, I guess all I would need, would be, what, your consensus, or?
So consensus is.
No, no, no.
Yes, Terry.
One thing about it, we're going to have to do some changing in the ULDC to be able to do either one of these things.
What's, where.
That's the code.
To approve anything different than what the ULDC says. Right now, we're going to have to rewrite our book and change things before you can do it. That's the sad part.
Because there was.
It was entered into to be done one way. And whether it can't be done that way anymore, it's still going to be by the road.
I don't know what's annexed into our city.
I would almost consider it a driveway, uh, if it goes back to a private. Yeah, a private drive. That, that's my initial. Uh, so.
Old Love Terrace by Bernice.
Isn't that what that is?
It's a private drive.
I don't know how, where we have the money invested in the water and the sewer and the impact fee and the ec, all of that, I'm not sure where that goes. Well, it will, but I mean, I don't know if that should impact our decision. I, I don't know.
We have no investment in the streets.
No, we don't have anything in the streets. We just have it all in water, sewer.
Right.
And we're currently paying back on that.
Some of it. We paid some, and you paid some. That's correct. Right. Some of it, we paid some and you paid some, that's correct, right, right.
Let's look into it and see what we can do and then we don't-
That'd be great.
Hopefully, we won't have to worry about it.
The planning commission, they're supposed to be well versed in this, if we can power them to-
They just don't do dedications and ride easements, and that's what you guys do.
Right.
And the street's a dedication. So, I don't know where that leaves them.
I don't know, we'll find out, I guess.
Maybe back and see us again.
Why not?
We can definitely look into, yeah.
Okay, so where we stand tonight is, we're going to get on the planning commission, or is it the zoning board or could we need to go to?
It'd be the planning commission. I think it'd be the planning commission too.
I did not, it'd be the zoning board of appeals, but-
It would be, they, they basically recent bit.
Then the board of appeals told them they would have to go back, if they wanted to change the surface, they would have to go back to the-
Planning commission, okay. Okay, so they're going back to the planning commission.
Hey Kevin, Keystone addition, didn't you guys wish you would have concreted that area, those streets, or what addition? I thought maybe way back, you guys asphalted some streets and it started breaking up and you wish you would have concrete.
They were concrete that wasn't, it was concrete that didn't hold up.
Well, reason was it didn't get compacted. Your street's set long enough, I mean, you could pour it out now and it would be fine, so.
Okay, so Austin, will you set us up then on where we need to go, we'll talk about this with the guys in the morning and then when we get back to you, or?
I have to talk with Will on getting the planning commission in line. Yeah, I don't know if it's enough time for the next one, but it might be.
Have to be July.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, July.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever we need to do.
Yeah.
And so then you guys are, I'm reading this right, you guys are in a consensus that your proposal is to turn the street, or what you call it?
Change the street to a private street.
And sending it back to-
Is that where we are?
I think the consensus of councils, that the city is not willing to accept the streets unless they're concrete or asphalt. And if it's some other surface material, then you guys would keep it as a private drive.
Correct, and that would be a private street, and then we would be responsible for snow removal maintenance.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to see this as a consensus, so I want to vote on this topic.
I'm going to.
Okay.
Alright. Do we need a roll call vote on that?
And a motion, and a motion is second, so I can write it exact.
Move, make Hartley Ridge a private street at topic, or substance on top to be whatever suitable, they remove snow and take care of the road.
Pending approval, the-
Pending approval, the planning commission.
Alright, I have a second.
Second.
Alright.
Okay.
Roll call?
Pippi is not here, Fry?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Baikman?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Barons?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I assume we'll just see the planning commission next?
Thank you. Alright, next up, we have Maureen Crist with the flexible bark park.
Hi.
Ellen?
I am Maureen Crist, and I'm here with my dog park committee. Dog park is a project of various well convention and tourism, and that's how I got involved with it. We came last year and discussed sites at the council. It settled on the site at 8 Jackson Street. We got permission to proceed in investigating that site, what it would take to make that happen. I assume you all have the information that we shared in front of you. We are basically asking today, again, to proceed. The biggest glitch along the way has been the water crossing. You can see in the packet that we have got a, an idea or a thought that we could get a closed bridge from Marshall County and have it removed from the road out, 26th and Zenith Road, and have it put into place to cross that stream just south of Jackson Street. We are asking today, I guess, for permission to proceed, permission to go back to Marshall County commissioners and see if we can indeed have that bridge, and for financial support as well. Yes, Terry?
Have you guys, I'm sure you've been down seeing what Landl put on the trail here.
You bet.
In comparison to what the figures are about moving and setting this up and everything, I think maybe if you're going to get a little closer and do something like that versus bringing in an antique bridge and doing all that work on it.
Yeah. I don't know what that bridge at the trail cost, but I know that Don donated that bridge. This, I think that bridge is 40 feet long at the trail. Inline construction did build the abutments, so it would kind of be a similar setup. But cost wise, you know, we looked at building a timber bridge, we looked at, you know, from a, have a bridge companies, we didn't have a specific bid from anybody local. It just seemed like this bridge would potentially add a lot of character, and for, you know, short of $16,000, it seemed like a pretty good alternative. Unless somebody was willing to donate one.
Well, just wondering if you had an idea of what maybe Landl had invested in this one?
I do not do that.
It might be interesting to find out, because it could be, he could put something aluminum on it that would look old, might save a ton of money.
We intend to do fundraising too, we just really wanted to get an idea of starting point for a bridge, because some of them were so crazy, and we really liked this location from the looks, but we wanted to make sure that we can actually feasibly provide a bridge to get to it. And we think that this one is an option, not that if one got donated.
Would it beat having a bunch of canoes down there?
Pardon me?
It'd beat having canoes there for people to cross.
So, why didn't you guys help the Otten's boy when he was willing to, when he was trying to work on his? I mean, nobody, he was trying to raise money and nobody seemed to really want to help him when he was working on it.
I personally did.
I was, I did too, I donated.
Okay, because I mean, he was working very hard and it just never quite came off the ground, so, and I feel bad about that. Now all of a sudden, we've got all kinds of people here wanting to help, so.
Have you been in communication with the commissioners about the bridge?
Yes.
Do they sound like it's going to be one of those, they'd be happy to get rid of it things, they aren't looking to sell it?
I think they're willing to sell it for a dollar, is my understanding.
You get this bridge, they cut it down, who's responsible, let's say, weld breaks or something on this, is that going to fall back on us as a city?
Yep. It becomes a city park. Do we have to have an inspection on it because it's a bridge?
Pedestrian only bridges fall under a different rubric, right?
Yeah, but I think they still get inspected. It might be every five years, but I think they get inspected. I'm going to be really honest with you guys on this bridge. Yeah, you should trash it and send it somewhere. That is, if you can pick it up without it falling apart, more power to you. I used to work for the county bridge crew. Trussed bridges are great, but one part breaks on them, they're in the creek. And this has probably got running plank, and then it has plank going across it, so you can drive across it. So, figure any plank that's on, it's going to take twice as much to get it done, unless they redesign it all.
I don't know exactly what inline's plan was.
Right, no, I don't know either, I'm just, I'm telling you from past experience of working on them and tearing them apart, that-
I've worked on that bridge crew too, and some of them are built, I don't know this one specifically, but some of them you can pick up like it's just a kicker toy and move it over here, but-
But this is a-
Not necessarily this one.
No, and this is a trussed bridge, and if I remember my trussed bridges correctly, one bolt fails and the whole side fails. And that would be my concern, because you can ask the county when the last time it was inspected, I bet you're going to be shocked to find out. No, I bet it's going to be a long time ago. There's a reason they're giving it away.
We are not necessarily set on that bridge.
I'm throwing things out there for-
We're just looking for the most cost effective way to get across the water.
I think it's a neat idea.
Oh, I think it's a neat idea, I don't want them to get into a project and we tack another 15, another 20,000 on to get you where you want to go.
And then are you going to have continuing, I mean, fundraising, so that we don't have like the thing down in the park, the playground, that's now the city's stuck with it and we're the one who are maintaining it?
Our plan is to have continuing fundraising and do, you know, add, care for it, you can see in our packet that we have a lot of volunteers that are already free to help.
But you know, now the city's maintaining the playground in the park, because it was built with volunteer work and everything, and now the city's the one that's maintaining it.
Yeah, it's my understanding that once this is done, it becomes a city park.
Yep.
So.
So, we'll be mowing it?
Huh?
So, we'll be mowing it?
So, we'll be mowing that, we'll be doing the upkeep on it and-
We already do mow this area.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as maintenance on it and repairs and-
You used to put up for hay, right?
Do we mow it or does the levy guy mow it?
We pay some, we at least pay somebody to mow it.
It's part of the levy. I think part of the levy system.
Would you check into like Trails for Life to build a bridge, because they built one out at Alco Springs? As a project for them?
And then I'm going to ask the bad question. Water hookup and faucet, why is there a question mark?
I don't know where the list is for that, I do not have an estimate on it. Last year when we came, the council talked about potentially contributing that part.
Come from the north side of Jackson Street.
Yeah.
So, would you just put it on the south side by the parking area, you wouldn't try to run it all the way south, right, across the water?
Where the dog fowlsies are.
I know, that's my concern, because you'd have to own a four, a three?
You'd have to bore it through.
Yeah, bore it.
Well, I mean, if you only wanted it during the spring, summer, and fall, you could just run it along the bridge.
Across the bridge.
And blow it out in the wintertime, like we do-
Stay on top of that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that way.
Be like ball parks.
Yeah. Would be just like a sprinkling system. Yeah.
So, I guess we're asking your guidance as to if we keep going, if you're willing to help us financially, and we can check into other options for bridges.
Well, I mean, we've got another budget meeting coming up.
Yeah.
So, we wouldn't have anything, you know, in the budget yet for this at all.
Or if, you know, if the bridge is not cost effective, if they're in another location, you know, like that's going to put a big on the bridge.
I don't know if we've really got any other spots.
There's not a lot of great ones, that's kind of what we, every time this has come up, and this is the third time since I've been on council, it's always location. I think location wise, it's great, it's fallow.
Yeah.
It's kind of pretty, it's a unique place, it's very accessible. Personally, I think it's worth supporting, I've had probably more people ask about the status of this than any other project that's kind of out in the community, so. That says to me, people are interested in making it happen, so.
You have to be people, especially, we look for places, I mean, when I'm buying a house, I'm looking for my dog.
Yeah.
How it suits them, what sits around the house for that.
What are you hoping to start all this, I mean, where's?
Yesterday.
When's the next budget meeting? We haven't decided yet, but it's on here, yeah.
I was looking, well, after discussion, probably July 2nd is what we're looking at.
But it'd be next year's budget.
Yep.
What do we have in special parks now, how high is that fund rate?
About 6,000. Or, but we're waiting on, once we finish the aerators at the, at the lake, we get a reimbursement for that grant.
But the second half of the fireworks comes out of there.
What's the next meeting after the budget meeting?
11th, I think, or 13th.
13th of July.
July 15th, yeah.
You will come back then, after our budget meeting, come back for the meeting of July 13th?
Sure, tell me what you want us to bring with us, what information you want us to give.
Probably more information on another bridge.
Yeah, see the trail live, what they would say if they would build it.
And if you want to talk to somebody about, you know, what it takes to move and rehab these bridges, I know the city of Barnes did one. That was in progress when I was there. And that's the Keenpost Bridge, it's along Highway 9 in Barnes, and I know they got it from Washington County, and there was a process involved, it's just, it's 14 years back in my memory, but if you call and get ahold of them, they might be helpful.
Okay. We'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything notices in hearings, do we?
No, no, no.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we have to add Thangio with BG Consultants to get us some information on our lagoons.
You have to what?
Thangio from BG Consultants is here to give us some information on our lagoons.
Alright.
Good evening, I'm Thangio Monaco of BG Consultants. To be honest with you, I planned my meeting, which is your first meeting in July, but some things got moved up a little bit, so we thought it would be best to come to you today to have some more discussions and see what processes we can do to start making some decisions. And, you know, there's some things in the schedule that we need to come up with. So, what I've provided to you are two different, they're similarly looking. But this one I would like to start with, the one that's got the contribution of the Northeast Park. This actually was one that we included in our proposal when we submitted to do the engineering. And as you can kind of see, what we looked at, the different colors, we were looking at opportunities for expansion of the lagoons, potential spots for irrigation, and also some potential for wetlands. So, kind of step back, the city currently, your lagoons have received a new permit. And with that permit, you have been provided what's called a scheduled compliance by KDHE. That scheduled compliance is provided or included in your permit, because you've had some excess issues, you've, the limits have been exceeded sometimes throughout the last five year permit period. Every permit is permitted for five years, so. What they want you to do is look at how, basically, the NBO is how can you improve water quality from the lagoon. And once again, if I need to explain what the wastewater lagoon holds, I can, but effectively, it's where your toilet is when you're there, so.
Question, before you go any further, is KDH New going to make everybody be a non-discharging lagoon?
That's a good question, make is a very strong word, very highly recommend, yes. And any opportunity that you could go non-discharge, that would be a preference. And the reason for that is, the state of Kansas has primacy for the wastewater treatment within the state of Kansas. Not all states do, but ultimately, their boss ahead of them is EPA. But for us, what's so great here in Kansas is, we don't have to talk with EPA, we can talk with KDA, much better conversation. So, what they do is look at the permits, what is happening, and quite honestly, your system- has some inefficiencies built into it. Some of the piping was not really put in the most effective way for the treatment. Now, understand, that was over twenty years ago. The permits were different, and that's one of the reasons, when you ask that question about non-discharging, why that's such a benefit is, five years from now, we're probably talking about something else, okay? Your new permit is having options included of ammonia. That's never, that's new for lagoons. That's not abnormal for mechanical plants, but that is new. And honestly, KDHE has, I don't want to use the word fought, they worked with EPA to make them understand how good lagoons really can work in the state of Kansas. The past director, his favorite comment for lagoons was, "You need land and you need wind." We are Kansas, we have plenty of them. So what we have here is a lagoon, it does have some inefficiencies with it, and that has been part of the problems of the exceedance that you've had. I think the city staff, we, Kent and I, we drove and looked at everything today, all the lift stations, went out to lagoon, everything's in good order. You have a problem out there that could be facilitated with some differing things, but effectively, I think the major preference would be to go to non-discharge. Now, non-discharge can have some different sub-levels within it, okay? If you think of non-discharged lagoons, you just have a bigger bathtub.
Bigger what?
Bigger bathtub. You hold all the wastewater, and effectively, it's a water balance. It's, there's two ways that the water goes away. It goes evaporation into the air, or it seeps into the ground, and there's a limit of how much can seep into the ground. We do have good clearance from groundwater in that location, so there's really no other issues associated with that. There are two new, fairly new options that have been starting to be brought more forward within wastewater treatment. The first being affluent irrigation.
Yes.
So you take it, you take it from the bathtub that may be a little bit smaller, and you spread it over the ground. Generally, and we've done some of those, what we do is, we would do fixed base systems, we would do hard piping to concrete pads that would have guns, and that's the process that you would use for that. If any of you have been out there, the very north cell, the water surface is ten foot higher than the two middle cells, and then the water surface is four foot higher in the middle than the south cell. So you have a stair step that goes through there. If we do irrigation, I'll come back to that, but there are some things that we'd have to do mechanically with that. The third option, which is a little bit newer, and I kind of looked at some of the components, and I don't know if it's as viable now, but is wetlands, creating wetlands. If you look in the lower left, the southwest corner, where the yellowish one is, that actually, there's probably wetlands there now, so. But these would be engineered wetlands, they create, you have compartments, you have deep areas and shallow areas, and then you have, you maintain vegetation. Wetlands generally on operation and maintenance, every few years, you need to kind of go through and do a control pull and replant, reseed, you know, to make sure that everything's going through that. So kind of going back, if we look at the non-discharge lagoon option, we're probably looking in the range of three million dollars. You would need to have thirty acres of lagoon. Your current lagoons are forty-seven.
This whole page is forty-seven.
These right here that are active, these four are forty-seven acres.
Forty-seven.
Yeah, so if you look at this one, you have kind of, I've kind of highlighted two potential areas. This one up here actually was included somewhat, or shown, I guess I should say, in the nineteen ninety-seven plans. There is supposed to be a pipe that comes out of this forced main discharge manhole that goes this way. So that is supposed to be there, which would be nice, because you could hook up without trying to divert water, those types of things. So I believe there's an area up there, that is a little flatter area, a little easier to work with. The big square there of the twenty, twenty-five acres, that's a little woolly in there. There's a major drainage course that comes through there, there's things that we would have to work around with that. The red line there, that is the existing forced main that comes into the plant, into the lagoons, and the current outfall line that goes to the river. They're parallel, so that's how they were put in. That's an effective way to put things in with that, but it does limit us on our northern exposure for that area for potential expansion. The irrigation components, if we looked at, we're probably looking at a similar thirty to forty acres. That's based off of uptake, what's in the soils now, you're gonna have nitrate, or nitrate, phosphorus, it's kind of like, if some of you were around before the lagoons were built, when a mechanical plant has sludge, it has to take it out and lay it in the plait. This is just wet sludge. I mean, it's not, it's water, it's clean, you know? But that's what we would do. We're currently looking at probably twenty-five to thirty units, and these would be the big guns, they stand up, you know, between four and six feet. They'd have a diameter, spray diameter of, depending upon pressures, between a hundred and fifty and three hundred feet. So they're, they get going. The irrigation component would require probably a six to eight hundred GPM duplex lift station. And we would put that probably down at the bottom towards the southern, southernmost cell that we have, because that's the lowest area, we want to collect it off of there. Probably just tap into the outfall line that really wouldn't be used anymore. We would, we would want to leave it in, we valve it. If there was an emergency, we could still do an emergency outfall, but that's where we would tie in. That would be your second biggest, that's almost as big as your main pump station for the whole city. So it would be, it would be a pretty good size of a station there. And effectively, what you do, other than the northern ones, and we would still recommend in the irrigation, you're probably still gonna be looking at doing this one, because right now, the city only has one primary cell, that's this. If you've ever been out there, there's sludge buildup, it's just, that's part of the way the mechanics of that biological system doesn't get moved around them. And it would be really nice to have some opportunity to spread that between two. And for the irrigation, over a six to eight month time period, you would drain these two cells and that cell down to the two-foot level, and irrigate all that over six to eight months. When it's a day like today, you know, the wind maybe is a little bit too much, but you get into an eighty, ninety, hundred-degree days that we have here, you can go to town with that, and you just, you just push as much water as you can out at that timeframe. We do have to hook it right off.
For evaporation, you mean?
Well, the irrigation, yes, for two things. The irrigation works just the same as the lagoons, except your evaporation happens from the gun, just like any sprinkler, you're gonna lose, volatilize that water before it hits the ground, and once it hits the ground, it seeps into the ground. And it's, it's called a beneficial reuse. Wetlands is also a beneficial reuse. Instead of sending it down the river, we're keeping it here, and we do not have to, in any three of these options, we don't have to worry about an MPDS permit that KDHE looks at while EPA's looking over their shoulder. Okay, so that's, the wetlands, the irrigation option, based off where I went out, I'm gonna change a little bit, I'm probably one point eight to two million for the irrigation option. We're gonna have to do a lot of dirt work just for the irrigation, because of the relief on the site, we're gonna have to get it so that we have some more reasonable slopes out there, so we will have to do some dirt work out there as part of that, that option. The wetlands, as we look right now, we'd still look at this primary cell, that's even more important in the wetlands, because we really need very clean water at the end to put it into the wetlands.
So this approximate ten acres, we want to turn that for sure into another cell?
Yeah, I would say that's, that's right now.
What are you looking for building on a cell of that size?
The lagoon themselves, we're looking at fifty to fifty-five thousand an acre, and then we'll have to look at, right now, I was looking at rock riprap, but you guys have concrete aprons out there right now.
That's because of the wind.
Yeah. We have to have riprap, we have to have slope protection. You guys have concrete aprons, they work great, and they're the most expensive. The next is rock riprap, they work pretty good, they're not quite as expensive. I have also had HDPE liners that are the cheapest, I would call them the most economical, and they do last pretty well. The problem is, if something happens to them, you've got to call somebody in. It's not, hey, we got a hole in it, deer will go in and punch holes, I've seen that happen. I've also seen deer and coyote get on them, and they can't get out, and they, they don't get out. There are other ways you can do that. Without, the way out here with the relief, and if you've been out there, it's pretty amazing the size of your dikes up there. There, some of them over twenty feet high. HDPE is not a real option for that, because you have to take it all the way up to the top and tag it in. So kind of throw a whole bunch of stuff at you. So is there any questions on those three opportunities that we're looking at, permit, anything like that? And after that, I'll talk a little bit about schedule.
May I make questions?
Oh, what do you recommend for being, for the longest and the cheapest?
Well, one of the things that we will do, sir, as part of the evaluation, is we'll do what's called present work, okay? The advantage, the non-discharge lagoon is, once it's built, you have to mow it, it's basically what, that's your maintenance. Not much different than what you're doing now. An irrigation system, you will have opportunities that you'll want to take that, those mounts out and set them up, you'll have a lift station that you'll have to maintain, you'll have power, you know, so there's costs associated with that. And then wetlands, there's the maintenance component of cleaning out and replacing. So we'll put those numbers together. There's, realistically, when you look at, one of the things, one of the things I should have said at the beginning, and I apologize, your permit for the city of Marysville is set up for six thousand people, okay? That's great. You have plenty of room to grow. This was built based off of, I don't know what, twenty-plus years ago, it was designed and built. It probably wasn't as high of a PE, it may have been, okay? It may have been six thousand. And part of that reason may have been, not necessarily population, you may have thought, you probably were higher population.
Yeah.
But were you six thousand, were you projecting to get six thousand, probably? The other thing is, the permit requirements at that time allowed smaller, you didn't have to treat as well before it goes out the door. So we're kind of in a catch-22. Right now, the numbers we're seeing is, you look somewhere in the three twenty to three hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, which wraps right into your population of thirty-three hundred. A hundred gallons per person per day. So thirty-three hundred people, that'd be three, three hundred and thirty thousand gallons a day would go up there. So that all kind of fits. These numbers that I've talked about right now are based off of that three hundred and fifty thousand. We could bump up the twenty, twenty-five here, the twenty-five would probably be needed if we get a four hundred thousand. So that's one thing that we need to think about. Not a decision tonight necessarily, but one thing I want you to keep in mind. We cannot make six, six thousand population equivalent. You do not have enough land, even if it was flat, we would, we would need another eighty acres. And while this seems like a lot of land, I can tell you why. We are in northeast Kansas, you have a, the state has charts basically of what the net evaporation is for every township, basically. We gain fifteen inches per day, or per year, excuse me, fifteen inches per day would be easy, but per year, the net evaporation, which is the evaporation is going away, you have rain coming in, we have more rain here than we do, I grew up in Overland, it's a whole place different, it's forty-eight inches out there. So that's why you have a lot of lagoon area, is you only lose one and a quarter foot a year in evaporation. You can and do realize some additional benefit by seeping into the ground, okay? There is a liner requirement, you can only have a maximum seepage rate of one quarter inch per day. But if you take one quarter inch per day times three hundred and sixty-five, you get a lot of, actually a lot of water. So that's your biggest benefit for that. But that's what's driving the size for you here, is we just don't get that benefit of a lot of water. The cells are only five foot deep, except for the last one, it's eight foot. So you're only losing the top foot, foot and a quarter off of that. So for the rest of the year, we fill those back up with what the city is setting up with. So I would recommend that we look at that three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand range, and this kind of ties into what happens in the future, okay? What happens if we go to six thousand people? Let's hope we do, with the right, with the right needs of building six thousand people. What would happen? You would have a facility that could treat three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand a day instead of the six hundred thousand that might be coming in. Maybe then is when we start irrigating, we would probably have to go off-site to irrigate. We would have to start looking at that. But we would have that option there. If we look at irrigation now, we would build it in the areas that if we ever did go six thousand, we would be tearing out to put in new lagoon cells. It's just a thought process. I think it's a mix and match. You can do internal irrigation even, to where you can put aerators, you can put different things in the ponds, there's solar ones that you can do, they throw water out, you get the same benefits, you're not getting the seepage, but you're getting, you're accelerating your evaporation. So there's ways to work with a full lagoon easier than what your current lagoon is not only full, but the full. And a non-discharge option, which all three of these technically are, gets you away from the quality question, and will put you in line more with what the state would like you to do. You do not have to do that. But if we were going to try to make this one work, we're gonna have to do a lot of repiping, we'd have, we would have to go in and de-sludge the northwest corner lagoon. of repiping, we'd have, we would have to go in and de-sludge the northwest corner lagoon. The numbers I provided don't have a lot of auxiliary things included.
I know when you were here earlier, we talked about also putting curtains in them to change the flow of the water, or baffles in them to...
And if we were to look at trying to get this system, your existing system to meet faulty, we would have to look at those types of things in detail.
Even if we put the other 10-acre pond in?
That's a potential that we can look at.
I mean, but can we baffle both of those ponds?
Well, we wouldn't need to baffle if you, effectively, what you want to do, you want to come in this corner and you want to go out that corner.
Right.
You can baffle to make it, make it more of a serpentine.
Right.
But that's going to be very costly. What you, what generally a baffle is done is that you would put a baffle, one big one down here at the southern end, and you just have the opening over here so that the water all has to go here and then travel back. You wouldn't put multiples across.
You wouldn't want to put multiples?
Because there's only so much you can do in that. This isn't a real active system, it's full of bugs, but...
I know they said it has set in the lagoon one, they're supposed to sit there for, what, 120 days or something like that?
Well, overall, yeah, we would want to have, the preferred is 150 days for this term. And that, that also ties directly into the irrigation. We would have to maintain that with the bottom two feet of the three southern cells. So with, with all that said, like I said, I had planned on being here two weeks later and have some more definite information. But the reason why I'm coming this evening is we're looking to do a CDVG grant application. And was informed that by your grant administrator, and I understand we've had several conversations both Friday and today. The concern is, is that the city needs to submit a PER to what's called the KAYAK, Kansas Intergovernmental Agency Committee. That KAYAK is built with CDVG people, KDHG people, USDA World Development people, your funding partners, and your regulatory people. The people that are going to be making decisions will, do we have a good application or not? And how are we going to fund it? Why the KAYAK is important, if we don't attend the KAYAK, we lose 10 points out of 100. And generally, I would say that's, that's not a good situation, is it? CDVG is very competitive. The only thing I would say, while it's a bad thing, in this particular case, it's a little helpful, your schedule compliance is going to buff your need up quite a bit in comparison to other people. If they don't have KDHG saying you have to do something, they're not going to rank as high on their need, which is 50 overall points or 55 overall out of the, out of 100. So you've kind of got a give and take with that. She wants this to be submitted by June 30th. So there's, there's a few things that I would like to talk to you about in regards to that schedule. The reason why she wants to go June 30th, and I understand why the request has been made, is that there's a fear that there's, there's going to be three more KAYAK meetings, two in July and one in August. The fear is if we're not in time, we won't get slotted. And that's, that's a real fear. Okay, so I understand the request, didn't realize it was happening that way, but apparently it is. So one of the things we can do, I'm hoping to have a lot of these particulars put together by the end of this week. Okay? To where I can show you more information, I can show you some EOPCs with, you know, I can show you the present worse so you can take a look at things. I will include some other auxiliary things like the de-sludging. The, one of the things that was requested at your main lift station is because of all the inorganics, the materials that are getting into the pumps, there's a lot of things, plastics, bricks, many, many things you can imagine. A screening mechanism that would take that out and not put it into the lagoon because it really can't break down in the lagoon. It just isn't viable out there for that. So I'll have some of those components. So the KAYAK PER does have to be stamped by myself as a professional engineer, but it's not the end-all, be-all for the city. Okay? It's not saying this is exactly what we're doing. It's saying this is what our thoughts are right now. The nice thing with the KAYAK is it is an interaction. You have one hour to present your project and there's questions and answers back and forth. Well, what are you thinking about matching funding? Well, we can provide this, we can do this. Well, I've got a question about this. I don't like irrigation because you've got too much relief on the site. So how are you going to address that? And I'd say, well, we try to level that up, we'll do it. So it's very interactive with that and you come out of that, nine times out of 10, you're going to modify that PER. Even if the, even if we've had, this, this process usually takes six to 12 months to get to, and we haven't had that opportunity yet. So what I would propose is if we want to try to meet the June 30th timeframe, we do one of two things. We can have a special meeting that we can come, provide you all information, again, go through some more particular details, and you guys get a comfort level of what we would like to do and present to KAYAK. We can do that, or I can come back up like next Monday, meet with a select group, Austin, Kent, if there's some on the council, just to get a consensus of, okay, we understand where we're at. And we're good to go ahead and submit the KAYAK. It requires a two or three-page form, it needs to be signed by us as the engineer of the city, and then we also submit the report at that time. And that's so all those people that are involved, they can evaluate prior to the meeting and then they generate their own questions and we can go through that. So that's, if we want to try to meet June 30th, those are really the only options. I'm, I'm being very honest, I don't have every answer for you this evening. And after looking at some of the things, I need to rethink a couple of things, but I can get you information by next week.
Can, can you do a special meeting this weekend?
This weekend?
This week yet?
Yes.
This week yet?
Oh, this week yet?
Oh.
This week yet?
Yes.
This week, yeah.
Probably not because I know Thursday I'm going to be out of town.
What about the 29th, next Monday? I mean, is that 29th next Monday for a special meeting?
What I would hope to do for you is by the end of Friday, towards the end of the day, I will have a link sent to Austin with particular items.
To take a look at.
That will give you very much of, here's the costing, here's some more detail. So you guys will have a chance to have weekend study, and I apologize for that, but hopefully that gives you an opportunity.
Special meeting next Monday?
Yes.
And an important thing that we need to understand is you're, you're going to apply for $600,000 worth of CDVG grant. At a minimum, the city has to match 600,000. So if we only had a project that was 1.2 million, you'd be 50, 50. We're going to be more than that.
Yeah.
Okay? And one of the other things, and just think about this and you'll see it as it comes out to you, but one other thing that's brand-new this year with CDVG that has honestly caught us off-guard a little bit is any project that a city or county or any applicant that wants to submit to CDVG this year, first time they've just made this change. If it is $3 million or more, you have to have the project 100% designed and submitted to KDHG before you apply. The application date is September 30th, that will not happen. That will not happen with this. So one of the things I would like to discuss and give you is maybe some phasing opportunities. Not only does the phasing meet, and I, this kind of sounds like the solution to pollution is pollution, if you've ever heard that. You know, if you've got dirty water, just throw more clean water in and it's cleaner at the end, right?
Reluded.
Yeah. So I, I don't want it to sound like that, but realistically, if we want to apply this year, we cannot have a project that's 3 million, just won't happen. It can't, can't, they won't even evaluate. They'll just set it aside and say sorry. So what the advantage of that may be is that we might be able to do some of the other things next, the following year, applying in. You can apply twice for a sewer system, two phases, every 10 years. Water's the same way. So you could apply this year for 600, like, excuse me, 600,000 and do the same thing next year for the remainder. And we'll wait to see whether or not that, that's the case. Maybe it's three years down the road, whatever the case may be.
How long will the meeting take?
The KAYAK or?
No, the, the meeting next week.
I hope shorter than this one. Though my, I...
Well, we have a budget meeting on Wednesday night, can we combine the two? Can we have this one before the budget meeting? I mean, could we have them both on the same night?
On which?
Well, it's on Monday night, but could we do them both on Tuesday night or something?
Um...
Could we do them both on the 30th?
His is going to be done before June 30th.
His is June 30th, not July. His has got to be done in June.
Yeah.
I realize that, but could we do them both on the 30th, Tuesday night?
Oh, you need to move the budget meeting up a week, I see.
Well, we're having the budget meeting on the 1st.
No, it's on the 2nd.
2nd, July 2nd.
The Thursday.
No, it's July the 1st.
Well, after, I, yeah, because somebody else said July the 1st wasn't going to work.
Well, you didn't tell me that.
I, we, right at this, before this meeting, we were going to discuss that.
Yeah, we talked about it before the meeting.
It's in Austin's report to discuss. Yeah.
And we had a meeting before the meeting, did we?
Well, nobody bothered to tell us, I guess. Well, last I knew, we were still having it the 1st.
Right, but I was going to talk about it in my report.
Okay, all right.
Well, what we were looking at, I know you're looking at calendars, so what's the options if we do not do this by the 30th? Even if we do it by the 30th, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to get the meeting as a KAYAK. The expectation is we would. The requirement is two weeks before the meeting, you have to submit. So if we do it by the 30th, we have the opportunity to attend the July 14th meeting. And if we don't make that one, there's the 28th and then there's August 11th. So I think the 30th, if, if, if I submit it, I need it in Topeka on the 30th. I need it in Topeka on the 30th.
So it'd have to be the 29th.
So realistically, it would need to be the 29th or, you guys do early morning meetings, maybe that would be the 30th.
I'd say we do it on the 29th.
Yeah.
Good idea though, it'd be good, less meetings I'd rather.
Less meetings would be really good.
Now, is the irrigation, could that, could that save you money in the long run compared to what we're doing now? I mean, is, is there actually savings in?
What you're doing now?
Is there actually savings in doing irrigation in the long run? I mean, it's...
No, your operation costs will go up, actually. Because in that, you'll see that wasn't worth, after so many years, you're going to have to replace that head, you're going to have to replace concrete every 10, 15 years.
And then that pump.
You've got a duplex pump station, that'll be the second biggest pump station in the city. Now, the nice thing with that is maintenance is a lot easier because you're going to have downtime of three to four months a year. So somebody can actually, you know, Kent and I were talking about the maintenance program. Now, you guys have somebody come in, they go in, every lift station, pull the pumps, everything. Well, they're doing that when flow's coming in, this one would be easier because it wouldn't. But my suggestion would be every one of those gun stations, you would unbolt, you would take and you need to store them inside. At least take off the top. There'll be aluminum supports, you don't want to probably leave aluminum out there all the time. And maybe if the pumps are never running in the lift station, you yank those out and bring them into the shop too.
I was just curious because of Washington, they run theirs through a center pivot.
Now, one of the things that Kent and I were talking and Austin and I later is, we've talked about schedule components and tried to push this through. Your schedule of compliance requires you to hire an engineer by August, you've done that. By March of next year, you have to have the report done, which we'll have that done. And then by October 23 is when you need to have these improvements done. So we have time. So one of the things that Kent and I, when we were out at the lagoon, he says, well, I wonder if these guys up here would want any water? If the neighbors would want any water for irrigation purposes? And that's a good idea. Remember, I said it's a beneficial use. There are some restrictions of what can, those crops can be used for, some timeframes, different things, but it's viable, it really is viable. We don't have that time right now to figure it out by June 30th, we can't do that. If we wanted to lay, that may be another thought process.
Is KDHG pushing one way or the other that would make sense to do irrigation now compared to try and do it later on?
I think the, the easiest way is the lagoons are fix it or get it type of scenario. And the, I, I think it matters which way, a little bit which way you're betting. The lagoons we know will, will work. And on a temporary basis, they can be facilitated, we can raise the levels a little bit, gives us more surface area, better evaporation. There's things that you can work with and you get away from all mechanical components. That's, that's the biggest issue with that, is that you get away from all those problems. So generally, KDHG's view in the past has been less mechanical items are better.
Yeah, and I work with KDHG, so sometimes you go one direction and next time you go completely opposite, so...
Yep. Well, I did hear, and this is probably 15 years ago, about how lagoons would never have E. coli and ammonia levels. And guess what? Now we're seeing. So any other questions for me? I'll endeavor to get a better package in your hand by Friday and have it to the link so you can get that and then we can meet. What time would be your preference on that?
On Friday.
What time is he asking? He's asking?
6 o'clock.
What time would we lock us? 6 o'clock? 6? Is 6 okay?
Is 6, or do you guys want a different time?
6 o'clock on Monday?
Monday? Does that work?
Yeah, that works for me.
Works for me.
Does it work for you?
I guess.
Maybe? Maybe.
Yeah, we'll plan for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dana. Yep, you too.
All right, next up, listeners and hearings. Mentioned tourism request on bloggers. Do we have anybody here for that or just kind of?
No, it's just consent.
Yeah.
The information's in here. Having bloggers, yeah?
It's not, we can just pay them with their travel expenses and stuff like that and they...
And their motel and food and...
Yeah, this doesn't give a total cost, that's what...
It just says up to 500.
500, I know.
True, right. They, I thought they got the motel donated in this.
They might, I don't...
Yeah, that's what they, they said in the meeting. Basically, it, I mean, it's just, it's some people that have a lot of followers online that go... it's some people that have a lot of followers online that go to places and brag about the places they go.
Mileage and a welcome basket and, and-
Items, yeah.
You know, yeah, so they can go to our museums and things, so they can tell people that they should come here and look at it.
Yep.
Probably some of the cheapest advertisements we're gonna get.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep.
To make a motion to approve the request of up to $500 for the convention tourism committee to have bloggers come to Marysville.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Seven oh.
Okay, next up, we have appropriations ordinance number 3726.
Move, move to approve appropriation ordinance 3726, amount of order in 7,000, 76932.
Have a second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Any items? Rule call.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Baikman?
Yeah.
Price?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Thromp?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Alright. Next up, Austin.
Alright, uh, first on the list is, I believe we discussed it the last budget meeting about at least designing 11th Road. We initially talked about just the first part, but it makes sense to have a plan for the whole 11th Road, so it all meshes. So, that's what I had CES, Rob Pechel, put together. He put in construction documents, bidding service, construction documents for $29,650, and bidding services for $1,860 if we were to go out to bid. And then, construction engineering for $55,600 for the whole project.
That's from where it currently is to Keystone?
To Keystone, yes.
Even if we do it in two years, or three years, or whatever?
I, you know, I wasn't looking at approving at all, right? I mean, we didn't even have a plan to, to implement this plan.
Right.
So, I, I was really looking to have a design done, and maybe a cost estimate put together. So, when the council decided we were gonna move forward on 11th Road, because that has been in contention in the past, as to how we were gonna pay for it, we would have a plan to go forth, as you guys deemed necessary, or how, how we were gonna move forward. So, everything beyond, I asked for design, he gave me two other options on top of that. So, how you proceed forward, I mean, that's, that's up to you. If he says for the whole project, $55,600, I would hold him to that, 'cause I told him we were gonna do it in phases.
You told him we were gonna do it in phases?
Yes. Right, correct? Actually, you can, you can talk to yourself. I saw Sarah, I saw Sarah, and then I didn't see her.
He's hiding behind the grass.
Do you wanna talk about your proposal if I got anything wrong?
No, no, you explain.
Okay.
I mean, haven't we had plans before? I thought we've, I thought we've had some other plans for this area.
Have you guys done plans for this before?
We did some, we're all, like, master plan for basic stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. No detail, though.
No, no detail. Mostly preparation that Austin's put there on record.
So, we've never paid for any plans previously?
Not that I know of.
The master plan, we paid for. The one that kinda showed the water running, so they knew where to put the box culvert.
Okay.
Yeah, we did. But I don't know what that plan said, because I don't read plans.
Well, we can go back and figure it out.
Well, I know, but I mean, if we pay for some of it, well, then we shouldn't have to pay for the same thing over again, should we?
I haven't, we, I haven't, I haven't done, I haven't requested or had any plans since I've been here, since, in 2016.
The other was water, was it not?
Yeah, it was just a piece of the-
Yeah, it was a piece.
Well, I was talking to Austin, please.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, I have not asked for any plans.
Okay, we don't have any plans on record then, that we've had anything?
No, not that I don't know.
Okay, I don't remember. I just know we've discussed 11th Road so many times, that I didn't know if we had any records or any plans or anything on record, so.
Not that I know of.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yep.
I know the people that live out there want something.
Well, yeah, that's been ongoing thing for-
It's been there a long time.
Years.
I think it's something that should've been probably there a long time ago.
Well, they were talking about this when Denny was on the city council already, so.
For that even.
Well, I say, I, that's been.
Yeah, we need a, a motion to, to approve.
The plan?
The, the plan, at the very least, if we were gonna move forward with it. So, however you, the council wishes to proceed.
When's the earliest you look at possibly starting a project out there, I guess?
Me? Um, I don't, again, uh-
I know, we got budget coming out.
The, well, that, that's-
I mean, I hate to prove the whole thing for $55,000, and, you know, it's gonna be actually seven years down the line before we complete this project.
Right. The, the question-
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Actually, what do you mean by that, Kevin? What do you mean by $55,000?
If we-
No, that's just construction.
That's just construction, okay?
That's just construction.
Yeah.
Twenty, is it $29,0118, 1860, is that what we're approving now?
Well, really, we wouldn't even have to, because we're not gonna bid it, 'cause we're not gonna bid it till who knows when. So, really, basically, all we need to approve is the 29-
Sixty-five, right? $29,065.
Sixty-five, correct, Rob?
And Austin did mention we put it in phases. I wanted to give you a look as to what, if you decide to do the whole thing at one time. So, really, if you do it in phases, the, the construction engineering is based on time and material, whatever it takes. If you do a phase one, we'll just, that, 'cause that's an upper limit, based on 100 working days and things, but, so, so if you do phase one, and it takes 25 days, or whatever-
Right.
It still just be charged, time and material.
Did this plan you've drawn up, does it, did it do anything to any drainage or anything along there, Rob?
Well, that, that's what the design would all take care of.
Okay, but it, it will include some drainage items that we have problems with out there currently?
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing Rob did ask me before this meeting was if we wanted to consider anything regarding a walking path out there. I don't think, it, this does not include any, any thought process as far as that.
I know I've had a few people out there have talked to me about that, because their thoughts are, if they improve the road, even though it says 30 miles an hour, he says they're gonna drive faster than that, 'cause it's a nice, smooth road. He says, the way the hills are, you pop over a hill, and there's somebody out there on their bike, or something with their family.
I run out there regularly, and I almost always meet somebody just, but, just in this section. Almost always, I'm either see somebody ahead of me, or I meet someone, and it's dangerous now. I've had calls with people zooming, missing potholes. And so, you're pretty cognizant of that.
Yeah.
No, I, I think incorporating that only makes sense. When you see how much it's used on the north side, if we eventually get that stoplight in place, it's gonna continue that de facto course through there. I think it only makes sense to-
So, is it, what you were referring to was a sidewalk, weren't you? Or were you talking-
Well, I don't know what, I didn't know what you had in mind. I just said, the corridor that's there now, there's not really enough room. So, some, some, something's gonna have to be taken into account for your acquisition, right, easements?
I, I know.
And I say that folks in the wide-
I know, before I got on council, I went back and I watched old council meetings, and they were discussing this one time. And I remember the problem was the expense of if they widen that out, moving the power, aren't there power lines on the west side?
Power lines are on one side, gas is on the other.
Yeah, it's basically ditch and gas line on the other. And I think it was B. Singer, I think, that was talking about that, too, and he-
Could you do a sidewalk?
There is a section, sidewalk now to Keating Drive.
Right, right.
There's enough places to walk out there. They can walk on Keating Road and stuff without having to walk on that road, I think.
Right, right next to the road as you go south is just a ditch. It's a limestone ditch.
Right.
Yeah. So, to gra, and put a sidewalk on that same side, it would be a challenge.
Without realigning the road all the way out on the west side of the road, right away.
Well, somebody's even got a fence somewhere in there, too, don't they?
That was, the fence was moved back, wasn't it, there by the lift station, or whatever down there?
I, I think it's right there at the edge of the lift station.
Yeah, right. But it was moved at one point, 'cause I, I remember.
Right. I don't, I don't know if they moved it again, though.
Yeah.
Two hours?
But basically, what-
Yeah, oh, yeah, he said.
I think they'd just be glad to have their road fixed without creating a bad, a walking path.
But that's, well, I don't know. I mean, that's easy for us to say, when we don't live on that road, but the locals there do use it, and I'm not even a local, but I use it.
There's a lot of people that walk. I-
Well, I understand that, but, but they're gonna be glad to have the road fixed, probably.
Right, but I mean, this is the time to do it, in my opinion, is when we're planning the whole thing, is plan all the things you think you might need.
He can put it in, we can always pull it out.
Exactly.
If it works.
So, but he was, you were thinking that it would cost a little bit more for design?
Right, because you're gonna, I mean, you're gonna have to take a lot more into consideration, whether you're, go to that sidewalk, or whatever it is, is parallel to the road, or do you need, if you're, if you're getting easements from privates anyway, do you need to go around that lift station and have a better, as an example, or, like, like, where I live, would it be better to come inside those trees and stay on the south side of it? So, you're outside the right way, you're, you know, there, there's gonna be a lot more consideration, or, I guess that's Keystone, though.
Well, I guess for yours, you're, you're excited about it.
I thought you said you're on Keystone, you're on Keystone.
But you got me thinking, what, what would you have to do down around that drainage tube? Would you have to put in basically, lack of the right word, another little pedestrian bridge?
Or another little box, or something.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it was basically, how much more, I mean, like, 20% more, or, I mean, is it, a lot of, some of it'll be some crossover and commonality, kind of, double it.
Some of it, we also want to do legal stuff with easements and things of that nature, helping John with that. Some would be what, what do you, what, what would you guys want? I mean, do you wanna parallel it? Do you wanna have some creativity where you don't, you know, you, it, I don't, I don't-
Safe and cheap.
Yeah.
Safe and cheap, down the west side, just inside the telephone poles.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be the cheapest.
Walk, walk down the ditch, walk down the ditch.
So, I would probably say if, if you wanna look into a, a walking area, approve this $29,650, if you're going that way. Approve that tonight. Ask Rob here to tell us how much it would look, it would cost to look into that. I think that's probably a good way to do it.
Additional added services.
Addition to this.
Yeah. Can you do that? I'm moved to approve the proposal from CES for $29,065 for engineering services.
On 11th Road, so.
On 11th Road, so.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Seven oh.
Thank you for sticking around, Rob. Uh, the next one is the budget workshop. I, I initially planned it for July 1st, got a call from Diane saying if we could move it around, then I got a, a comment from Colleen saying if you could move it around, it would work out great. I was then looking at July 2nd as, as an option. If not, we could always move it a week later. But those, those were gonna work for, work for us on this side. So, is July 2nd at 6:00 going to work for you guys?
Works for me.
Okay.
It's a Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
That's fine.
Alright. 6:00. Okay. Um, I apologize, I said I was gonna have the governing body handbook on tonight. I neglected that. It'll be on the next council meeting, just so you guys have a little bit more time to read through it, just see if you had any issues with it. I ha, I already have it lined up for next time, so. That was all I had right now.
Next up, we have standing committee reports. Anybody have anything on street?
He's mentioned something about seasonal employees. I didn't know we had any seasonal employees. You haven't mentioned anything?
Yeah, we-
Always hire.
We, we, yeah, we have some-
Well, I know that usually he says something about it.
I apologize if I didn't. I could've swore I did, but we've been trying to get some seasonal employees on board. It hasn't exactly worked in our favor, but we're still looking for them. I'll try, I'll try to make sure I, I'll let you guys know when that happens.
Yeah, I haven't seen it in our reports, anyway, so, but, so we don't have any seasonal employees at this point?
We have one.
One in street?
One in street.
Are you asking in street?
Yeah, one in street, yep.
And who's that?
Uh, what's our street, guys?
Jesse, oh, I can't say the last name, Guerrero, or something like that.
Okay.
Yep.
I just saw we're one that quit already, and I didn't know, I didn't have been said about anybody yet, so.
Yeah, he's, he, he did it for an hour. He wasn't on very long.
No more detail on that one? I've got questions.
We gave him a tour. That was it.
Really didn't like the break, huh?
He went to go, he went, I won't talk about, probably not a-
Got it.
Yeah.
Wasn't air-conditioned.
How they doing on the sealing routes? Do you have them about done?
Uh, got them crack sealed. They're still patching, once we got patching material. I think they've been trimming the trees around the seal routes, but they're getting pretty close. They're, he's trying to make sure he has the staff available at that time. But we're gonna, we're in better shape because we got that nice crack seal machine. We are in so much better shape this year than we have previously been. So, yeah, we got the, got it all crack sealed and ready to go.
Alright, anybody else have anything on street?
I don't know.
Are we gonna talk about this on street, or is this for later?
And I don't know where this goes in.
We can, yes. Uh, this, this picture is Knight in Carolina Austin, it's a block where the limestone wall is. Halfway up the street is where this white car was parked on the west side of the street, right across from Maria's front door. And the rock that's, you see at the bottom of the photo, is out there on the bench, and it came pretty close hitting that car.
Yeah.
So, my question for a city attorney is, are reliable, if some more rocks comes down and hits somebody, do any damage to cars, or is that an act of nature?
Well, breaking new chairs, yeah, that's what that was. I understand the rock is to do deterioration, is that correct?
Yeah.
And is in the works to be, planned to do something about it. One thing it'd do-
No, you're saying that's a, that's a rock, just a rock, not a piece of the limestone?
Natural rock.
Just a natural rock off the hill.
Oh, it wasn't off the, wasn't off the, the wall?
No, I imagine all the rain and erosion that we're having is bringing all the rock downhill, and that's what we're seeing right here on the street. But, you look at the limestone wa, wall itself, it's starting to crack and come out awesome.
Yeah, we've had discussions about that.
Well, I know, they, they, she's having the same problem up on Jenkins and eighth there, Donna Rillmeyer, on her side. That, she said that limestone hill was actually moving in on the top course.
Well, you know, the Kansas Torquay does address- The Kansas Torquay does address street improvement and so forth. Here, it sounds like it's just due to act of nature, not necessarily to the wall itself. Things do fall down, branches do fall down, so in that case, without knowing more than the bare bones that you told me, probably not.
Okay, now worry about the limestone wall itself. I mean, what's...
If it, if it's, is it falling off, or?
It's deteriorating into itself.
It's falling.
It may be at a point in time, you need to mark it, advise people not to park there due to the potential danger. That would eliminate any type of liability issue. But if they let it go, and there's still evidence that there's a deterioration, you have to take some steps to, to qualify for that immunity.
Could we put up a temporary, I mean, a fence along that wall to catch the rock from them?
Well, there's much, not much room.
Oh, I know, but it's better than doing any damage to anybody.
I don't know what it costs, but you know what they do in like the Ozarks or Colorado, places where there's loose rock, is they have that kind of a chain link and they anchor it, and they basically create like a face net on the side of the wall that would hold it. I imagine where that rock is, and I haven't been by there, is where the water really runs. There's kind of like a little tiny waterfall there. There's loose rock there, when you ride by, you can see. So maybe if we could do something like that and concentrate on that area, but I don't know. Who does that kind of work?
Cheap and effective would be a rock falling sign.
Well, I know, and you could say no parking, but like there's, that's a rental unit behind Maria, Seamatter's house, so they have nowhere else to park. You can't very well do that.
Yeah.
But I mean, I don't know if that's something we can explore. We can't, we don't, we can't carve it back.
Right.
We need the room up above. But I mean, one of those anchor systems like that might help ameliorate the problem.
Like a tree perhaps falling, or...
I know. I just, yeah, I definitely feel, because here's the thing too, is even if you didn't get a car, somebody could hit it and wreck it into something too. That's a bigger rock. Take out a car, a low-riding car.
Falling rocks, no, it's not that bad idea. It perhaps makes you no parking that area.
That would eliminate, reduce the risk of any potential liability.
I don't know.
Liability's always evolving into the court system, so.
Does anybody ever park on the east side of that street, Keith? Do you know?
No.
Is it legal? Is there no parking sign?
Yeah, everybody parks on the west side.
Okay, I mean, I didn't know. I know the street seems awful narrow anyway, that's why I was...
I know, the kids, all the kids that ride the bicycles, their bicycle on the east side, I mean, they just...
Right.
Because there is a sidewalk on the east side, isn't there? Yeah.
No?
No.
No? The rocks, I'm looking at it on Google right now, almost hang over the curb. It's that, almost to the street.
I mean, it's just by chance, literally, nobody was riding their bike by or driving by when that came down.
Throw things off, because I've yelled at them before to get off them.
No, but I talked to Maria. Maria also said that kids play on top, like build forts up in their trees, and they toss little rocks down.
I was gonna say.
I have asked them to stop before, myself, when I walk down that hill.
Yep.
So I don't know if we need to put something up there to keep them out of that area?
I think that'll make them wanna do it some more than mine.
So, where that one kid was, I would've swore he was gonna fall over the edge.
Yeah, it was not good.
If I recall, I think Uniform Traffic Code does provide, you're not supposed to be throwing rocks at cars. Not to be jist, but there's some type of casting objects toward drives, driveways. So there is a criminal offense at least.
I don't think no park, I mean, like Todd said, that one house is rented and there's no place for them to park their cars, so I don't know if, I mean, you don't wanna park an alley.
No.
But...
It's been there for a while, a year.
I think, I think that wall needs to be looked at pretty seriously, I think.
Do you have any idea, we had screening, any other ideas about how to address this safety issue, or?
If you put up screening, then you're gonna have little trees growing up in it and everything under the sun.
It just holds it in place better.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the kinda good thing, is it just self-reinforces.
Because little trees grow through it, and it helps hold the netting in place, so.
And those anchors they use, I know, like in Colorado, are like two feet long, I mean...
There's anti-eruption.
It'd be a long time before we'd have to worry about it again.
Is it something that CES would be able to give a professional opinion about?
Give a geologic expert.
That would be, that would be great.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Do you know where they're talking about?
A street view, you can like, look right at it.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause anybody, I'm not an expert in retaining hills, so. Yeah, I think so.
If you could contact the city manager, you arrange for a payment and cost estimate, so you know ahead of time.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have anything on the street?
I don't know if it's the right spot or not. The only thing I had is had a couple people over the weekend because of the rain and everything. Wanted to know if we're gonna do something different with the city dump, because they weren't able, they'd like to see like an extra day during the week. You know, I don't...
We've done that before when we have storms and everybody's cleaned stuff up.
This is just because just, it's so long between Sunday and Wednesday of getting them dumped.
Yeah, we've been trying to cut, I mean, we haven't had that much of a demand this year.
Right.
And that's kinda why we're at where we're at. And we kinda reevaluate every once in a while. We'll reevaluate it again.
I just make a motion we open the dump Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sundays.
Every day?
Like getting the best.
We have, we have, we have almost every year, so. I just make a motion we open it from 6 to 8 on, or 4 to 6 on Monday through Friday, and 1 to 5 on Saturday and Sunday.
That's like a...
So you don't wanna us to adjust the time when the time, so, when the time changes?
Well, for the summer, we need to have it open.
Yeah, but we always adjust when the time changes.
When's that, Austin?
I don't know what time it happens this year, but if you...
Well...
If you, if you just say Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sunday, then we can do what we normally do.
Yes, but for now, for the summer.
No, I get what you're saying, but if you just say Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday, rather than ju, we'll do exactly what we normally do.
4 to 6 is what you wanted.
6 days a week.
Yeah, 7 days a week. Just say 7 days a week. That way, we have the flexibility when the time changes.
Yes, well, yes, whatever.
Yeah.
Motion is seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. It won't be open on the 4th, though. I do wanna say that out loud, so everybody knows.
Yeah.
We can put it in the paper, but we don't have it open on holidays, so, and that is a Saturday this year, so people know. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted it out loud.
Anything else on the street? Water, wastewater treatment?
I didn't get a talk to Camp, but was our eye and eye, like this last big rain. Through the roof again.
He hasn't said anything. Usually, right after the last one, he, he, he said something. He hasn't said anything just yet.
Did he have any luck to find anybody to try and find where it was getting in at?
Um, he was gonna get K.R.W.A. to come in and, and look at it, and they haven't shown up yet.
Okay. Alright, anything else on water, wastewater? Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I got a, I got an email earlier tonight, and I'll just read it to you and I'll give it to you, so. It says, "Good evening, my son and daughter are both members of the Marysville swim team and had their first practice today. It is my understanding that the bathrooms at the pool will not be open during their practices. I'm not sure if the concern is manpower to clean afterwards or something else. I was told you have a single handicap bathroom at the pool. Could this be open for kids to use and then be cleaned after? It is tough for kids to not have facilities available, especially those in the 8 and under group. I know they have bathrooms open at the city park, but these pose a security concern to send a child over there alone, or would take one of the coaches away from the rest of the kids if she had to leave. Plus, with people camping in the park and just general traffic from the playgrounds, travelers, etc., there'll be plenty of germs at the park. The kids are already limited for practice time. Sending them across to the park will take a lot of time away from learning. I strongly ask you to reconsider closing restrooms, or at least open up the single restroom, and appreciate your consideration. Thanks."
The swim team coaches said they would do this. Yeah, it was their decision.
I'm not arguing that a bit. There's a complaint. I gave it to you. It's read to everybody. My opinion is this on it. Swim team will come in, they negotiated a deal with you. That was the agreement, and it's not a normal year, so it's, that's just the way I look at it.
Terry or Diane, well Diane had something to add.
I'd like to know, I have, several people ask why, they wanted to know why the people voted no, that voted no for the lap swim. So, I was just curious as to why Kevin and Colleen and you guys voted no.
I was concerned about having enough staffing.
We offered not to have any staffing, because we...
There were concerns discussed about not having somebody there with you in case something happened. Liability on the city's part.
Because we, because we have nurses, we have nurses. I mean, there's, it was brought to my attention that we have nurses that come swimming to lap swim. There's three or four of the girls that are nurses, and I'm sure we could make arrangements to have at least one of them there, so. And we didn't have to have the bathrooms cleaned, so. And Austin had told us in other years that we didn't have to, if we put up a sign there that said that there was, did not have to be a lifeguard on duty, that, that was workable, so. So that was your reasoning?
That was my reasoning, yeah.
Okay.
So if there was staffing, it could be opened up?
I know the discussion that...
I mean, surely the pool manager could open it up.
A week ago, week and a half ago, and there's, I mean, there's community issues with staffing.
Do the police have a key to the pool?
I don't know, do they?
I felt it's an unusual year. We wanna make sure the kids are able to swim from 1 to 8, so that's our biggest priority, and that's why I voted no.
Okay.
But I'm saying, if there was staffing available that early at 6 o'clock in the morning, would you allow morning swim then?
Because the problem arises, if you get somebody in there at 6, and then by 8 o'clock, you don't have enough people to run the pool and it closes early.
Not unless the pool manager will sit there and open it up.
Okay.
All, all it takes is one person. That one person can take their clipboard to the lifeguard stand, and they would have, people have to come to them and sign it in. There's no, nobody has to stay there at the counter. That one person can stay in the lifeguard stand and sign the paper.
Except the lifeguard is supposed to be focused on the pool.
In the past, one person sat in that lifeguard stand with the clipboard for the morning swim.
That's not right, though.
It's, they did whatever they had to do to do it.
Well, that's also in the past. That's not now. Some of the people have changed to sitting on the city council. I don't feel comfortable with you guys down there swimming with no staff. The only reason that I agree with the swim team is the three lifeguards that are on it. That's it. And they also have their own insurance. You don't.
What do you mean, we don't have our own insurance?
You, the swim team has insurance. Somebody gets injured down there, it's their deal.
They have their own liability insurance.
Own liability. You don't.
So if there's no staff there, and somebody gets injured, you don't have liability insurance to cover that injury?
Okay, come back to my question. If there was a staff member that's willing to open up at 6 o'clock, would we later allow morning swim?
Is the manager a lifeguard?
I'm just asking a yes or no question.
Kevin, why did you vote no?
So, basically, your, your, your staff problem is, is, that's not really the real reason then.
No, it is for me, because we don't have enough staff.
There was many times there was only one person there.
So it's ever been there, most times it's been one person.
Yeah.
And our staff's already running short this year, isn't it?
It only takes one person. That pool manager can do it. They've done it in the past, they could do it again.
Most of us know how to swim. Most, most of, most of them have been lifeguards. We have people that are trained lifeguards, have been trained lifeguards.
Most drowning victims know how to swim, and they still drowned. So I, I don't, you're not gonna sell that I know how to swim. I'm, yeah.
Several of them have, several of them have had bad life training, but is it true?
My, my words, my words are coming straight out of the manager's mouth. Previous managers said that they could do it. They could sit in a lifeguard with the clipboard, and whoever comes in, they have to go over there, sign their name, and swim. And they watch.
And we have, and we have nurses that come swimming. And we have some that have had life training, lifeguard training.
This year's an unusual year. I'm not changing. Not gonna be bullied into changing.
So the excuse of knowing the staff is, is, doesn't hold water.
Austin, are we having staffing problems right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, when we've all had this discussion about staffing, and now you wanna say it doesn't hold water. We're already having the problem. That's the reason I said no this year. I didn't say that's gonna be next year.
But if the manager or assistant manager are willing to open up at 6 o'clock, do we allow morning swim? That is my question.
You'll have to talk to them.
I know. If they're willing to do it, do we bring it back and do allow it?
So you're gonna make that manager now, instead of working from 12 to 8, she's gonna have to come in at 6?
No, they could work from 6 to noon, and assistant managers can take over from there.
So we're not gonna have the manager in the afternoon at all?
That's the way they did it last year. They didn't wait, two years ago.
Look over the assistant manager.
But from a standpoint, that's, that doesn't even make sense.
Yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't.
You're being relieved. You're being relieved, just like...
It's not that at all. You're taking your manager out of your business.
How many ti, okay, last year's manager didn't work there the full, full day anyway. Okay, she was relieved by the assistant managers. There's no way we can't do that this year. It's only 45 days.
Keith, I'm not, I'm not changing. That's where I'm at. We're short on staffing.
Okay, then my question is, your excuse doesn't hold water, because if there's a staff member that's willing to open up at 6, then we could do it. Right?
No, because we're going to have a problem with the staff.
No, we won't.
I don't, I, I understand what you're saying. They're volunteering, which is great.
If one, if one has agreed to do it, regardless, do we allow morning swim? If they're willing to put in the time, do we allow it?
Are they putting in for free? Am I paying them? Do I still get to work them 8 hours later on in the day?
Just answer the question.
I'm, I'm asking no questions that are fair questions to ask. Are they doing it for free, and do I get to work them 8 hours, 8 hours later on in the day?
They could be, they could be relieved after 8 hours.
I, no. If I'm gonna work them 6 to 8, then I'm gonna bring them back from noon to 8 again, and I'm not paying them for the first 2 hours, because they're volunteering. You have to be very careful when you volunteer.
So why, why had they in the past, as Austin said, that it was okay if we, and they've said that we could put up a sign that said, "No, swim at your own risk"? Then why was, why was it okay then?
I don't know, Diane. I wasn't sitting here. It would've never been okay with me. Never. Just, so we're gonna go around and put up signs now?
We've always had somebody, as far as I've known, there every year, Diane, sitting on the lifeguard stands.
I didn't say that, but I said that they said it was okay if we, if they knew that we were swimming at our own risk. It was, Kathy said that too, and Austin said that too, so.
Sit there, horse. Let's get on with the meeting.
Okay, so anyway, that's alright.
Alright. Anything else on Parks and Rec?
Mr. Murray, was there a motion a second?
No. Terry?
Yeah, when you was talking Parks and Rec, is the park restroom open down the city park down?
Yes.
I had people ask me, because they had campers down there, and I was wondering if they were there, would you use the restroom?
Yep, today, today they were opened up.
Okay. Um, cemetery and airport? Cemetery and Airport. Police and Fire. Admin and Finance. We don't have any appointments or wage determinations. Sean, you didn't have anything, did you?
No.
Whatever happened to the airator? Are we gonna put it in out to the lake?
We're waiting on West Star's electricity. We've got him, I think he was working on, they got the pump down by the, the lake, and they said they were gonna go in this week or next week to put the, the eight drop-ins, but West Star is a week or two away. So, yeah, they've been working on it.
Evergreen.
Evergreen, yes.
Yeah, because it's gonna have another fish killed before we get it in here.
Right. No, we've been working on it. It's, we gotta, we gotta work with Evergreen.
Okay.
Okay. Something else?
Nothing.
Okay. Roundtable. Todd?
Should've brought up during streets, and I thought of it afterwards. I meant to bring it up last meeting. I'm pretty sure it's come up before years ago. The sidewalk along Broad, or along Center Street between Fifteenth and Seventeenth, so, in front of Landall's old PDC and the car wash, and the hill. A, it's narrow, but worse than that, there's no curb cuts. I have a lot of those intersections with car wash, the one on the corner, etc. I've always thought that was kind of a pain, because I see people with strollers, kind of trying to work their way around to get up it, or kids with bikes, you know, don't want to ride in the highway, so they walk their bikes, that's what I tell my own kids to do. But, I was coming a couple weeks ago, westbound over the hill, and there was a gentleman in an electric wheelchair in the, the westbound lanes, going eastbound, because basically treating it like-
He always, he doesn't do sidewalk.
Well-
He, he doesn't like to.
Well, it's almost hard for us to tell people to get on the sidewalk when they can't.
He requests, he requests ramps, and then avoids, avoids.
And then we'll-
Well, potato, this isn't for an individual, it's a system. I really don't think it would be that hard for us to improve that, but I definitely think we should, long-term, because the whole highway, we've invested all this money in designing ramps and all this, why are we leaving a gap? And it's a nice sidewalk up above, but Casey's and all that through there.
Right.
So, for us to leave that kind of section there, and it's the narrowest part of the highway, and it's the hardest to see, and it's got truck coming out of the car wash.
So, you think we should write-
I was scared for that guy, because, I mean, there were a whole line of cars behind me, and you gotta hope everybody was paying attention.
Because the sidewalk is-
The sidewalk's narrow, but-
I know, they're owned by the people, so we'd have to write a letter to the people who own the sidewalks?